Here things together the night before. Eat a good breakfast, even if it's just a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Don't worry if you didn't have breakfast, we have breakfast for you here at school. Don't come in half asleep or lazy. Champion, feel free to jump around. Once you get back to class, it is time to take a deep breath. Prepare all year for this. Shot, ready, prepare. We have pencils and scrap paper if you need any assistance, like you need to use the bathroom or you need a drink, just raise your hand out for help. Remember, use your strategies and don't worry. We know you're a champion, now it's up to you to believe you're a champion. If you don't know an answer, don't worry. Eliminate silly answers, make an educated guess, and let it go. Make sure to show your work. We know you're going to do great, you're hard at work. We know you're going to do great, you're hard at work.
All right, so it really did actually inspire our fourth graders. They were so thrilled to see their teachers being silly and helping them to come up with some of the strategies we were able to remind them today when they came in. So I don't know if you have any questions?
Board members?
Anybody taking autographs?
Ruth Allen, can we get this up on the SAU YouTube channel and then link it from our district Facebook page once it's up there?
I do want to do that, but I also want the classes to have their pep rallies and not spoil too much of it.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
But yeah.
At some point in time, that's just an incredible.
It needs to be demoralizing.
I think they really enjoyed it. I think at first our teachers were not quite sure they wanted to do it, but I was kind of amazed because they all just picked the songs on their own. Like, we had songs that we wanted them to do, but they got to pick as a team what they wanted to focus on, and they had to come up with how they were going to do it. So it was kind of fun.
I do have one question, Donna.
Yep.
On your presentation, I know what it is, but for the people at home, can you explain what ELA is, the acronym that we use?
English Language Arts.
English Language Arts.
Reading and writing.
Okay. When we're talking about the increases in performance, for instance, grade eight in English Language Arts, we showed a 10% increase, math, an average of 21%, 21 points. Is that from the last time we tested, or is that from the beginning of the year?
That was from, no, that was from the last time we tested. So from January to March.
So we've shown from the beginning of school year, we've shown incremental improvement in January, we're continuing that incremental improvement as we're going on overall.
And you know, if we can squeeze one more in, we'd like to, and I'm not sure we can.
Sure you can. We'll do one of those inspirational videos and we'll get it done.
We want to see you do boss karaoke.
To be excited about an event, and for the students, that's the kind of energy that they wanted to generate, and this is just a wonderful kickoff for that, for students to be able to get to the point where they're showing what they know after all the hard work this year.
Pretty cool. Blake, how are you going to follow that? No singing. No singing.
You show off your scrubs. Push it again. Really have to point it at the... There you go.
Great job, Mrs. Gilbert. Well done. It's not easy filling Mrs. Palmeroy's shoes, but you did well. Good evening, everyone. Valley View's enrollment is at 245 students. That's two more than last month. I want to start by thanking all of the families that came out on Friday, April 8th, for our literacy night. We had a great turnout. We had a good chunk of students, we had a lot of parents there. I would say between 40 and 50 parents were at the event, which was very nice, because author Terry Farish was able to bring them into the library and talk to them a little bit about the importance of literacy in the home, talk to them about strategies for reading with your children at home, and then the parents were able to pick out some books for their Valley View students and any other kids that were at our event that night. So overall, it was very successful. I also want to thank Mrs. Lavasser for putting it on, as well as Mrs. Pelkey, who's been her right-hand woman throughout this year, and has really helped incorporate all of the events that we've been able to put on through the Cliff Grant. So I'd like to thank both of them, as well as all of the teachers that were there to help out as well. The Farmington PTA met on Thursday, April 7th, and this was the first time we've met in over a year, and it was fantastic. So much young, fresh, excited parents at the Valley View campus to support our children, and I know the program is going to continue to grow and grow. Our next meeting is May 5th, or excuse me, May 2nd at 6:30, and that'll be held in the MPR over at Valley View. For those of you that don't know, MPR stands for the multipurpose room. So that's where we have our, it's our cafeteria, it's our gymnasium, it's our hub, if you will. So if you are interested in attending, I will say I am on the board. I am the membership guru, so although I will say Carrie Gilio has really done a great job, she's one of the secretaries at Valley View, and she's also part of the PTA, and she's been getting people to join up. So if you are interested in joining and have more questions, feel free to reach out to me, and my email address is B M C G U R T Y at S A U sixty-one dot org. The week we get back from vacation, which is the week of May 2nd, we will be holding our annual book fair, and this will be done in conjunction with the PTA. So I'd like to thank them for their support. Mrs. Lavasser has an exciting week planned for the students, and we'll have extended hours on Wednesday, May 4th, and that'll go until 6:00 PM. So throughout that week, all of the students will have an opportunity to come down to the multipurpose room where the book fair will be held, to purchase books if they'd like, or they can come with a wish list and choose the books that they would like their parents to buy on Wednesday, when the parents come in after school. So feel free to swing on in anytime on Wednesday until 6:00 PM for that extended book fair event. Just like Henry Wilson, although we only have one grade level at Valley View that will be participating in New Hampshire SAS testing, our third graders will be participating in the SAS testing starting May 16th, and their primary testing dates will be during that week. So I would like to thank Mrs. Gilbert and Mrs. Palmeroy for some phenomenal ideas in the way of testing. We're not stealing anything, no one can duplicate what we just witnessed, obviously, but we will be holding our testing in our multipurpose room so that all of the kids can test together, we can proctor together, and that was an idea picked directly from them, so thank you for that. So we're looking forward to that. We've started practicing. Our third graders just did their progress monitoring for STAR so that they could practice what it was like to be in a room together, as they did a type of standardized test such as this, and we're going to have a couple more practice events before the actual SAS testing takes place. We're going to practice some modules in there as well. But it allowed myself and Mr. Collopy and some of the third grade teachers to get a sense of what that's going to look like, and it's going to help us kind of have the perfect placement for all of the students. So, and again, another idea from our great staff over at Henry Wilson, so thank you for that. If anyone has a free moment, please take a look at our Valley View Facebook page. Mrs. Smith has been working overtime, providing all sorts of art samples from our students, along with descriptions with what they are doing in the classroom and how it ties into the curriculum. So hop onto that Valley View Facebook page, we have about 10 to 12 up right now, and she just keeps giving them to me, so we keep putting them up. But it's great works of art, and it's really demonstrating what our kids are doing in the classroom, so please take a look at that. And then we have, oh, one thing that's not on the written report. Kindergarten packets are out, so if you have anyone or know anybody that has a kindergarten student and you are looking to register, the registration packets are at Valley View. You can pick them up right at the front door, or you can come into the office and get one as well, but they are there for anyone that would like one. If you need one sent to you or emailed to you, let us know, we can make that happen. And then finally, this week, we are in the middle of a math-themed spirit week, and we are embracing our efforts to increase math fact fluency throughout the building. According to our current assessment results, 71% of our third grade students are meeting grade-level fluency standards, with several more on the cusp of getting there before the end of the year. And the neat thing about that is they're meeting the standards that are the end of the third grade fluency state standards. So we're very proud of our third grade team, as well as the other teams that have put together some great tracking systems that we're looking forward to tweak a little bit and have as we kick off next school year. So we're very excited about that. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Ruth Allen, we have a high school principals report, Mr. Robbins is not here tonight, and we also have a school board rep report. Do you want to read those or summarize those?
I can. For high school, the monthly discipline numbers are there. ISS 25, that's in-school, out-of-school suspensions, 10 combined is 35. There are year-to-date figures there as well. Our all-school testing day was on March 24th, and SAT administered to juniors, PSAT to grades nine and 10. Amy Leahy and Chrissy Burrow did an outstanding job putting all of that together. On April 1st, Pete Demolin from the Portsmouth Shipyard Apprenticeship Program was a guest in Paul Smith's Master of the Trades class, and he went over a number of different parts of the apprenticeship program for kids so that they can understand the opportunities that are available to them. He also met with students who were not in Mr. Smith's class, so they would have an opportunity to get questions answered, he stayed through lunch. Educational Talent Search went on a field trip to Manchester, and there were three colleges visited, Manchester Community College, St. Anslums, and UNH Manchester. Students had an opportunity to look at the differences between a two-year school, four-year private school, four-year public school, get a sense of what the process is for admissions. They met with financial aid, they had an opportunity to see all of those pieces in practice. On April 9th, breakfast with the Easter Bunny was held in the cafeteria. This was a combined program with what the rec department was doing with their Easter egg hunt, and it was a fundraiser for the freshman class. April 13th, with the help of UNH's Tech for Teachers, Shannon McCracken, Barbara, and 10 students visited the scientists who did the original Worcester Polytech experiment with the spinach leaves and creating new veins for use in medical. The students have been reproducing this experiment in Shannon's class, they were able to go see the engineering department in Boston College, they were able to tour, visit workshops using Arguinos. They were able to go to the Boston Science Museum, and really, there's a piece attached to this too, and I'm not going to take time to read the whole thing, but these are the students' reactions to that workshop and that opportunity. It was really great for the kids to see not only what they've done and where it came from, but the application and the bigger picture beyond just what happens in a lab. For a number of them, it was the first time they'd been to Boston, it was the first time they'd been on a major university campus, and it was just a tremendous opportunity for them, and Shannon McCracken, Barbara has done an outstanding job in bringing this to Farmington. She has done the training on her own time, made sure that she had this available for them, and I can't say enough about the program, it's been great. And then, Science Museum, they also, UNH's tech camp was part of that piece too, and UNH also transported them down in transportation that was a little bit more accommodating than a school bus, which they really enjoyed, so. Yes, I'm sure that was it, yep.
The school board reps report?
Yes, I have that over there. School board reps report. Looking at fundraising for Farmington. looking at fundraising for Farmington High School, sophomore class had the penny sale and spaghetti dinner, made over a thousand dollars. Freshman classes breakfast with the Easter Bunny in conjunction with the rec department's Easter egg hunt and the freshmen raised over eight hundred dollars. Um, and several calls were put out to bring more food as the attendance was greater than expected, which is awesome. Thank you so much. Um, it was great to have the town and school put the event together. And she's still looking for information from Mrs. Green about the Easter egg fundraiser, uh, the Easter basket fundraiser, rather. Um, thank you so much to everyone who was part of that and has helped with those fundraisers. Spring sports are underway. Softball team is oh and two, baseball team is one and one. Boys volleyball team is oh and one as of Monday, April eighteenth. Events coming up, the student movie debuts on May third. Admission is a non-perishable food item. The junior prom will be May sixth, the Castle in the Clouds. And the seniors are planning on a parents versus students softball game in May. The date is yet to be determined. If there's anything specific you would like included in monthly reports, please reach out to Shelby Henry, our school board student rep, and she will get that included. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Shelby. Anybody have any questions regarding the high school report or the student rep report?
Looking at some stuff on social media, I shouldn't be on, but I am. Um, dues. There's, there's a lot of misunderstanding about what dues are, when they're due, whether you can graduate with or without them, what is the money used for. I'm, I'm honestly, I can tell you what the class of seventy-one did when we paid our dues with beads, but we, um, you know, it, there's a thing with it, but I, I'm, I'm thinking that some of our community doesn't understand it.
We need to get that word out.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'd actually like to look at that too, Ruth Ellen, because I get fifty years ago, we may have needed dues. Do we need dues today? With all the fundraising we're doing, with all the ticket sales that we do, is it something that the board wants to continue? And I don't know the answer to that, but as we look at a policy or we look at that procedure, I think it's worth discussing.
So what is the dues?
It, it depends upon.
Oh, okay. I can remember, it increased over, yeah.
So you.
Right. I was gonna say, I think if they volunteer, you get credit towards your, if I remember correctly.
So it's not necessarily a check or a hundred dollar bill. You can do X amount of hours with your group.
Okay.
Can they actually, or do we ever deny a graduation based on lack of dues? Or is that a?
Not in the time that I've been here.
Then it might be a case-by-case basis as well, if there's extenuating circumstances.
Okay, so we've got some policies on the agenda. First one, under A is student discipline and due process. We've had a first read on it. This is a second read. Looking for motion on a second for discussion.
I'm motion to approve as amended.
Second.
We could, um, motion to approve as amended in a second. Any discussion? Got a call for a vote. All those in favor?
Did that include R? Was that just for?
That was just that. We'll do the, the R. Uh, item number B, J I C D dash R, Student Code of Conduct, which is the procedure for the student discipline and due process. Want to entertain a motion to approve as a second read for purposes of discussion. Motion made by Joel, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next policy is B H E, uh, school board use of email. Want to entertain a motion to approve as a second read?
So.
And can I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Stacy, seconded by Mary. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
That's where I was going because, well, we still have one more to do, but the, um, the policy on policies states that we will present an opportunity to public for input. And I believe if I remember correctly, that's a two-week period. Uh, chatted with Ruth Ellen about this. That has been up there. That folder has been available for four years at least and has never had anyone go in, read, comment, or whatever. It's not statutory that as we change amend or produce policies that they're done that way. Only that we'll take any input. You know, somebody reads something that was accepted three years ago and they want, they have a question for us. We can do that and that covers the public participation part of it. So I would ask for these to be either second read or final, um, and to void out that nebulous folder that hangs out on the website.
That probably means we'd need to update that policy to then take care of the folder.
But for this exercise, do we need to put it in for two weeks or can we just move them on?
Make a motion to consider A, B, and C that we just voted on as final reads.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Letter D, J L I E and J L I E R, which is the procedure, student automobile use. Want to entertain a motion to approve as written?
As amended.
As amended.
I, I got a question.
Can we get a second and then we'll open it up?
Okay, I'll make a motion approved as amended.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Charlie, seconded by Stacy. Uh, Charlie, go ahead.
So in my last discussion, you know, I brought up.
And that's why these are in here.
No, I, I was referring to if, uh, say a student was going to the Volk. I mean, right now it says that they're not allowed to commute with basically another student at all. I didn't know, we, could we consider, uh, if they have parental permission? Um, for that, I guess that's one thing that I, no, I mentioned it last week, and I didn't see that ability in this document. Maybe it's there.
I, I had the, uh, the same issue, I think.
Do we wanna add to the end of that sentence, will not transport other students who are not their own siblings without written parental permission?
Yes, but I think that also applies to throughout the policy. It's not just the vocational.
Right.
It's whatever event, as long as we have parent permission, I think, I think it's suffice because who will we to tell a parent that your child can't ride with X, Y, Z?
I'm looking on page.
So that would be the last two paragraph, or actually, the three paragraphs that start with the word student.
And end in sibling.
And end in siblings, yeah.
Let's say we have parental approval in the blue paragraph on page one. Only with, only with express written administrative permission and parental approval.
But it says they may not transport other students who are not their own siblings.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
So that's where, even if, even if it was implied there at the end, it kinda states, it's not allowed.
So we could change that wording to say they may transport other students?
No, just add at the end with, um, without parental.
Without written parental permission.
Okay, I was going with they may transport others provided they have parental. Because I get it.
I'll entertain a motion to amend the approval as amended.
Second.
I'll amend my motion to approve as amended.
And Stacy, you with a second? Who's, who's?
Yeah.
As a final read.
Okay, but we have, one of the other issues though was whether we were using stickers or hang tags. And I did bring this to you to take a look at because there was some discussion back and forth which direction the board wanted to go. Um, my recommendation would be to use the stickers. One, if we need to remove it because permission has been revoked, we can do that. But what I don't want is tags necessarily being swapped between kids and we're trying to figure out whose tag belongs to which. It's just, it's on the car and it's there. If there's more than one car in the family, they need more than one sticker, we'll deal with that.
Or if they need a replacement.
If they need a replacement, we can do that. But they would be numbered stickers. On the stickers are also, they're more economical for us. Um, I don't have to chase them around and write a new policy about what to do if somebody's grabbed someone else's placard. And, um, you know, we would look at doing a different, you know, maybe an orange one for students and a black one for staff or vice versa so that they stand out very readily. They're about three inches. So they're a good-sized sticker, so it's going to show up for ways as you're scanning cars to be able to tell very quickly.
We should issue where they need to be so that.
Yes, so that it's uniform. It's not, you know, guess where you wanna put your sticker.
Inspection stickers are now lower left. So we pick a spot and that's, that's the only place they can.
Rear window lower left?
Okay. Okay.
I don't believe you can have them on the windshield legally.
Because that's where other.
It's, well, it's obstructed view on the windshield.
Yeah.
So I think we have to have on the rear, rear lower left. Your other option would be a door window on the left or right, however, it's gonna be harder to see. So if we have them on the rear, the resource officers are going through the parking lot, it's easy, easier to detect.
Because if the window's down too, which.
Yeah, right.
So the policy, the third line down speaks to a school sticker. So we can leave that because we hadn't really decided sticker or placard.
And the stickers are much more cost-effective.
They are.
They really are, yeah. And we'll begin that in September?
I think probably. I'm also not looking at necessarily reissuing annually if we have a student who stayed unless you want us to do that. I think it makes sense if you've got a sticker and we'll just, you know, make sure that you're still driving the same car. Let's get eyes on it. Okay, we're good. And then we remove stickers at graduation. We can have a sticker removal ceremony.
Put them on the couch.
There we go.
So that.
We cut a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion is amended.
There's a motion to amend in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous?
And that's a final, right?
That's a final read.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Number seven, old business, Ruth Ellen, sprinkling update.
Um, one of the pieces on that, we have talked about an early release on the third, but we don't have a board vote on that. So I wanted to make sure we had that settled and that we get that out to the community as soon as possible so the parents know where.
We'll make a motion authorize the superintendent to have early release for the spring fling on June third of this year.
Second.
Your standard early release time?
Standard early release time.
Well.
It's two hours early, so whenever they, just roll it back two hours.
That's the entire school.
Which also there's early release tomorrow for anybody.
And there is an early release tomorrow as well. So if you get the time tomorrow, you're good for the third.
You're practicing.
Yeah, tomorrow's the practice run.
Advertising for that?
Sprinkling practice.
When, when do we? From the spring?
Well, I know we wanted to wait until Easter was passed, so we didn't kinda mix up those two, so.
We have flyers that we're solidifying and those should be out, I'm guessing, before vacation.
Yeah. I'll help spread some around.
Okay.
Several windows.
We, uh, tabled two items last night.
Do we have a vote on that?
And did I have a second?
Did anybody make?
Seconded by Mary.
Okay.
Motion maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Thank you. Nope, I had the same question, so thank you.
Yeah, I was.
Somebody asked.
Little did we know.
Somebody asked to keep an eye on me. So we had, uh, two items that we put on the table last night. I'm gonna make a motion to bring both off the table. One was the network quotes and the paving bids that I asked, uh, to hold off until Joel and Charlie were here.
And then there's one other piece on the treasure that we need to put on as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So Charlie, you attended most of the meetings with the, um,
Yeah, mainstay.
Mainstay. Um, I looked, I looked at the quotes that were provided in, in last night's folder. Um, I just wanted to make sure that your interpretation of your meetings and your specs were, um.
That is what they put forward. I know we had some discussions with the I T guy. I don't know if, if there's any follow-up, uh, discussion of concerns from.
Matt.
All right, Matt. Um, I know they're using, uh, proposing a different brand typically than we used to. We use Aruba and they're, uh, posing, they confer.
Right. Um, I would say the two pieces, um, you know, if we look at the way that it's outlined, you know, the optive quote, if money were no object and we just wanna go all the way through that, it's gonna be about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, budget option would be the Juniper quote for a hundred and twenty. It gives, it's a simpler piece of what we have. But it doesn't necessarily increase what we have. It just updates, almost keeping us at the same level. Um, best of both worlds to kind of do part and part so that we upgrade, not necessarily using a high-end chassis, but that we've looked at the uplinks that are increased so that we can do the Aruba access points management software.
That's the proposal that's in here.
Mainstays is the Meraki, which is network switches at a hundred and ten and change. Installation costs add about another eleven thousand dollars to that.
Yeah.
Um, it recommends a one-over-ten-gig equipment. It doesn't, it does offer some speed, but it's going to be the same. Our current is a one-over-ten. So while it's gonna be newer, it doesn't necessarily do a lot of upgrade on the backend speed. It's a very easy management console to, to manage. From that perspective, it's a good option. I would wanna see us up the backend speeds though, because that's one of the big issues that we've run into. And this isn't necessarily going to give us all of that.
Right, yeah. Based upon research I did with their proposing bars, switches, yes. But have we gone back to them and said, what is the, what is the cost factor to add the decreased speed on the backend?
I was wait, I've asked some of the questions. I was waiting to see what the board was looking at because we, you'd asked some questions and we didn't have the full, what else?
I guess the other question that, uh, I think we need to ask. What would be, is it possible to, or for them to consider a Aruba solution re, uh, repurposing some of the hardware which is newer? Um, one, we're accustomed to it and two, uh, the warranty is better on the Aruba than, uh, the Meraki. So I guess I'd like to pose, as a board member, I'd like to pose that question. Uh, typically some of our newer switches have the same specs as I think there might have been, maybe with, if that was a three or four or five switches that were compatible with what they have ours performance. as performance and functionality. And is that an option for us to stay on Aruba entirely and replace it and adding more speed to the backbone? So I think we need to ask two questions. Adding more speed on the back to this and also.
With Meraki, what will it be under the Meraki during increase of speed and what would it be with just the straight Aruba?
Straight Aruba with similar speed, but also potentially additional speed on the background in both scenarios. I think that, I think we need to, based upon being at that meeting, this is their preference, but doesn't mean that they wouldn't consider doing it with Aruba hardware, which has a lifetime guarantee. Meraki is, I don't know, five or seven years, but typically we may be owning this for quite a long time, so.
And the Aruba has the built-in refresh on it. So every so many years, we get a new piece of hardware with it as well.
So did we, did we increase our network capacity to the 10 gig? Or we were waiting for that to happen? We were waiting for the update to happen before we increased our capacity?
We have the 10 gig here, but not all of our access points will allow that, that much traffic through.
So.
So the access points need to be upgraded, but then the 10 gig, we had talked about going above that and we can't with what we have.
Yes, any other question came in that I don't know if there's any additional information was regarding wireless points and whether or not we had enough because of some of the issues we were having with wireless connections? Whether or not we, is that being addressed?
I think it's more, we need larger connections where they are rather than necessarily just more. Because we have, but again, we can have them look at it. It was more, we had pieces that weren't intending to handle live streaming of an entire classroom's worth. It might handle, you know, the teachers and a couple. But if the entire classroom is trying to livestream, that's what we had.
I think they need to address that because it seems to be the one that causes the most inconvenience when there's a lot of traffic in that area.
Like testing.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yep.
Think they need to address that before we make a decision. It's just my opinion.
So make a motion to put it back on the table until we get the answers back from the technology contractor.
If you need to be involved in that meeting, without, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll second the discussion. We also talked about the timing of the payments. Whether we were going to push it into next fiscal year because they want 50% down. But if we do this like June 15th and pay them the 50% in this contract out of S R, it's not, there's not enough time to refund it back in the bottom line.
Our other potential issue there, though, is if we wait until July to start this project, we're not going to have pieces in with the supply chain to get any.
I think we can negotiate around that, especially if we go back to some questions saying, yes, we're going to give you an order, but we're not going to kind of check it until July.
Or we could take it out of the technology fund and do it.
Right. I think we can work through that piece.
She and Brian will go and work on it.
We need to nail down the hardware. We need to get it going with the P O and the committed data payment. We need to come back with something to the board we could. But I think we can push it into next budget cycle or get a moving show. I just, we can't do that now, which is how we come back.
Here's a motion, a second on the floor, to put it back on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? Paving bid, again, Charlie, this is something I asked for.
I went through it and I guess my question, I guess the only question I have. Right now, it appears that we're quoting only regrind and repay. And based upon the volatility, should we be asking in this RFP for both options? Some areas need to repair more than others, depending on the cost delta between Sherman and overlay versus regrind, recompact, degrade, and pave. I think there's going to be, I mean, Mary could probably speak to this, might be substantial difference. And we may want to ask that now because all of a sudden if we get a price and we go, okay, this is way more than we expected, then it's depending on what, because contractor may say, on this parking lot, we recommend a Sherman overlay. It's fine, just when you need, should regrind, completely redo. I think we're, on the bid, we're only asking for.
Regrind, replace.
Regrind and replace. I think it doesn't hurt to ask for both. We can pick and choose and we should ask for both, but also ask for their recommendation, which one's suited, and then we can make a more informed decision. Because I wouldn't want to get to the end and say, well, it's more than we have available. Instead of saying, these are our options and kind of balancing it out. That's my thoughts.
So do you have language for that, Charlie?
It's off the top of my head, but I'm sure Brian can, you know, we need help with it. I'm okay with just adding that as far as requirement and then he can use whatever words he wants. Really, as we want to quote.
As Brian is out this week, I work with Mary and get that done.
The other issue that we discussed last night was, one, setting a standard on the paving contract. Mary suggested using the Hampshire DOT standards, which is the same standards that typically municipalities use. Second question being, with it being a paving job, similar to what we did on our roofs with our construction manager, there are testing firms out there that will test. Mary can speak to this better. You know, one of the issues is temperature and the length of transport. See if that material is actually the right material we want to put down. Is it worth setting the bid so we can get out to the New Hampshire DOT standards and then having Ruth Ellen O'Brien research a testing facility that can be here on site the two days that we're paving to make sure that we're getting our money's worth? And the last thing that I'd like to see in that spec is, this is going to be at least a half a million dollar job, of some type of performance bond. And when do we ask for that? Do we ask for that as a?
Well, one way to consider is if we can put the bidders on notice that it may, it's going to require this spec and we may have, we may be supplying oversight for testing and compaction and placement. Put them on notice and then it will be on us, so we could put that in RFP that they are subject to this third-party inspection to meet the DOT spec. And then it's up to us to decide whether or not we.
Right.
We did add, Ryan did add the wording that, please note that a third party will be testing compaction travel. The other thing, if I may, consider the performance bond, that's, that would usually come prior to awarding the contract or, you know, a letter from their charity company or something like that. The other thing we might want to consider would be a bid bond. And basically what that does is company A comes in and says, we're going to do this for 600,000 and they're working and everything's going along and all of a sudden they pull off and we never see them again. With a bid bond, that holds their charity company liable for the price between what company A gave us and the next higher bid to come in and finish it. In other words, we, we don't lose out on that. It secures the price. It's, I can talk to Brian about it, too. I'm sure he's familiar with bid bonding.
And that cost is borne by us or the bidder?
That's borne by the bidder.
I think in this area, is there anybody else besides S W Cole that does that testing?
That's the most popular one. I don't, by association, I haven't worked with anybody else. I did speak with them, I did speak with them today. They would offer an hourly rate, which runs around 90 to 100 dollars for the technician. Each of the tests that we order, each has a price attached to it. Standard industry would be 2% performance bond, meaning that they'd be in around 10 or 12,000.
Testing?
No, 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 I'm sorry, I jumped around on the bond. Their project management system is what's known as a means and method. They're going to be onsite, they're going to make sure that they're bringing it in right, it's being dumped right, it's being rolled appropriately, and the methods that they're using meet whatever standards we require. They basically do this stuff, time of materials. You can get things like core samples that, you know, arbitrarily you go in and take a core sample out and if our spec says two and a half inches for the base course and it comes out at a half an inch, everything stops. And that would be that. Those are the types of things that, in my mind, we would, we would hire this testing company, but it's protecting, you know, for us to spend eight or 10 grand to protect 600,000 is probably well worth our while. No, no harm or foul against anybody that wants to bid it, but mistakes happen.
Yeah, yeah, I think if they are put on notice that we're going to have third-party testing.
Yeah.
And if we pick that up as far as on our side.
Right.
They're put on notice that it's going to have to be 100% right.
And.
Would you agree with, shouldn't we like to have a call in both ways?
I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah. I mean, basically, the guy sitting at this desk is going to throw you a number for repair and replace and the guy at the next desk is going to take the same set of blueprints and say, okay, we're going to stop fresh. The numbers are going to come out. It's maybe another hour's work. I would, I would not have a problem with looking at it in both ways.
I'm just concerned, there may be warranted in some areas and not warranted in others and then we're going to pay, we're paying for that extra labor that we get to the end, we may not, we may come up short.
And I would say there are pieces up the hill that are in better shape than out back here.
And there's a mandatory site walk so that that can be introduced at that point saying, before you guys leave, we want you to take a look at that and come back with us with, that needs X and that needs brand new. That's, that, we would have to depend on this without bringing in a pre-engineer in.
We have the option of saying, okay, no witness, we want to go to the higher level.
Yep.
If it's available.
If they section them out, you know, A, B, C, D, and E, and come back and say, B, I say B needs a complete replacement and somebody else doesn't, then we'll have to figure out which is the better of the two, but.
We've got pricing for both.
Exactly.
So the only other issue, Ruth Ellen, I don't remember seeing it in the bid. Did we lay down a time period when this work has to be performed?
Expected date of completion between 7:1 and 8:26.
Okay.
And responsive by.
Site walk is scheduled for the 4th of May and bid submitted by no later than 19th of May.
But the testing and bonding is something that we can always talk about afterwards. We need to get this out there because as of.
It's going to be scheduled.
As of today, we can't get a paper. But we're little, I mean, somebody's going to jump on this. Everybody's booked.
So can we make a, or I'll make the motion to authorize Ruth Ellen to.
Work with Mary.
Yep.
Find out the scope.
Yep.
A second.
It's been a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye. And then once we have it, go ahead and run with it or bring it back?
We're almost there, it's just a matter of.
Yeah.
By noon tomorrow, you should have it out.
What's wrong with eight tonight?
We might get there.
We get to eight o'clock, all right, but we'll be here after.
Well, the food's going to go away pretty quick, too, so we're almost done. Treasurer's position, Mrs. Cardinal was elected as a write-in for the treasurer. She's respectfully declined that position. The treasurer's position runs to the end of June 30th. We have a treasurer in place until then. I'd like to entertain a motion that we publicly post the vacancy. The treasurer is appointed by us and that would be a vacancy for the treasurer. And then the treasurer would appoint.
The treasurer appoints the deputy.
Okay.
Brings forward a nomination for deputy.
And that's a one-year term?
It is.
It will be till the next election.
July 1st, June 30th. They're elected in March, but their term is.
I'll make that motion to post the opening for school treasurer.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
I do.
Go ahead.
So Mrs. Cardinal was the top write-in. Was there a second or a third that we could at least approach?
There were, I'll have to get that, or Ruth Ellen, get that information from Becky, but by statute, it doesn't go, when the first person declines, then we have to appoint. But you've got a point well taken that if two people were also written in, we should approach them and let them know as part of that process.
I mean, maybe the town clerk doesn't have to do that, but maybe we could.
Right, yeah, exactly.
I guess they, hey, we're posting this, is this something you're interested in, please?
Absolutely.
They showed interest at elections if they had people write them in.
Well, it depends on how many votes they got. If they got four, it might have just been four people that thought they'd be peachy, but they may not have known.
Or they could have been a runner-up to Mickey Mouse.
I was just going to say, as long as it's not Mickey Mouse.
Mickey Mouse elected to many of our positions in town.
Do you want those, that posting and the responses to come to me, to the school board? How would you like that?
It can go to you and you can forward them to us unless anybody has any objection to that.
We have, the motion didn't include a date, but are we going to just leave it open until filled?
I think that's what we kind of have to do.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at it 10 days and then kind of figure out what to do from there.
I'll amend my motion to have, leave the posting open for a minimum of two weeks.
So if I were to get it out tomorrow, do you want it through? Your next meeting is the 3rd of May?
We'll look at it then.
Yeah, that way we at least.
Okay.
Put a time out there, so we'll be open a minimum of that time.
Okay.
To, so that, you know, people.
Say 4:00 PM or 3:00 PM on the 3rd, because that way my secretary's still there to finish typing it.
Okay.
We have no applicants, we can leave it open, but at least it'll stay open till that time.
Yeah, we have an amended, amended motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Open it up to public participation? We don't have any. So our next meeting will be May 3rd, 2022. Staff and students, enjoy your vacation.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Good point.
Actually, I had it circled, but thank you.
Parents and students, enjoy your vacation. Hope you get plenty of sun and fun. At this point, I'll close the public hearing in regards to the up to $60,000 for the purchase of a 15-passenger van. I'll entertain a motion to appropriate up to $60,000 from the best capital reserve fund for the purposes of purchasing a 15-passenger van backslash bus.
I'll make that motion second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
At this point, we're going to recess until the next non-public, where we tear down. Have a good night, folks.